Well, thank you all for coming today. It's my pleasure to be here. I was asked, hey, would you like to moderate some debates coming up? And I was like, yes. So it's like, okay, well, it's starting Monday. So I was like, okay, well, we'll do it then, okay? The first thing we need to really talk about as a matter of disclosure here, I am in no way associated with the Central Oregon Association of Realtors, okay? I am strictly here on the capacity of New Channel 21 as a sponsor, and I am asked to be moderator. That being said, we need to also disclose, first of all, that Central Oregon Association of Realtors, CORE, has endorsed two candidates who are here today, all right? As a matter of full disclosure, they support Tony DeBohm and James Cook, okay? That should be in no way reflective of what's going on here today. This is a public service put on by CORE and should not be reflective at all of who's supported, okay? So let's just get that out there right now. Okay, let's get started. Just like we kicked off the NFL season, we're gonna kick off the political debate season now. Carrie Underwood cannot be here to sing for us tonight. However, you got me, and I'm gonna introduce your candidates to you. We're gonna start with county commissioner position number one, Tony DeBohm. Tony has served as a Deschutes County Commissioner since 2011. Tony is a small business person with experience in multiple projects from aerospace, biotech, and small business environments. He is also a dedicated husband and father. Commissioner DeBohm currently serves on the EDCO Board as the ex-officio Board Member of the Deschutes Historical Museum Society, and is on the Board of Directors of the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council. Prior to his job as Commissioner, Tony served on the Board of Directors of the Lepine Park and Recreation District as Board Chair and the Lepine Radio Association on Land Acquisition. Next up, next to Tony, Amy Lowe's. Raised in Washington DC, Amy Lowe's has been around the political arena her entire life and always knew she would run for office at some point. Amy worked for 10 years as an RN and hospice nurse, and has also spent a great deal of her adult life owning and managing several successful businesses. A 21-year resident of Bend and Model 2, Amy is actively involved in the community in a number of roles, including serving as a CASA volunteer and Board Member for Healthy Beginnings. Let's welcome Tony DeBohm and Amy Lowe's for the opening statement. Okay, as mentioned by Tyler, the format, each candidate will now get two minutes for an opening statement. And we'll begin with the incumbent, Tony DeBohm.
Well, thank you very much. I'm honored to be here today. The audio working, that would allow it on my side. Okay, thank you. My priorities as a Deschutes County Commissioner currently, affordable community. Statewide land use does make it hard to expand UGBs. Citizens understand how to use their land, and we have a statewide land use program that really puts definition before even somebody picks up land for their own purposes. I am a voice of local control of land use. And to put it in perspective, 79% of Deschutes County is publicly owned. So we need to remember that we're talking about 20% of our land and some of the land use decisions we make here in Deschutes County. I support the philosophy of the proper property rights with people that know what to do with their land. And I do support living wage jobs. Diversifying our economy is very important. We've been a timber resource-based economy and a tourism-based economy, and now currently and recently, we've been diversifying with other high-tech biotechnology and manufacturing jobs here in central Oregon. And that's a really exciting development. And I do support less smoky summers. We do need to manage the forests. There's four different aspects of it. Safety first, the wildlife/urban interface, but also just safety of individuals and assets in the forest. And we all love that asset. So aggressive management in support of that love and safety of that asset is very important. And then the timber industry is the other opportunity. So, and I say this in light of the smoky summers that we're having every year. So I'm honored to be serving as a Deschutes County Commissioner. Thank you very much for having me today and looking forward to the questions.
All right, Tony, Amy, it's your turn. Two minutes of open statement.
Hello, and thank you so much for taking time out of your day to hear what we have to say. Like many of the people in this room, I moved here because I fell in love with the natural beauty and the lovely community that we have here in central Oregon. I put my roots down, and I decided that I wanted to raise a family here. So 20, almost 22 years later, a career in nursing in multiple small businesses that I've owned, and I'm raising two wonderful kids, I realize that what keeps a lot of the residents here and what attracts a lot of the newcomers to Deschutes County is our quality of life. The quality of life in our county is inextricably linked to the success of your industry. What does that mean from a community perspective? It means a few things, and these are part of my platform. So it means accessible healthcare, healthy populations, accessible healthcare and mental healthcare for our community. It means a diverse economy so that we're safe and secure during our next economic downturn. It means adequate public safety, and it means protection of our natural resources. We're facing the type of growth right now that could really affect our quality of life here in Deschutes County. And what we really need now is strong leadership. We need people who are able to have good fiscal management skills, which I was able to learn in my years as a small business owner. And just as importantly, we need leaders who are able to collaborate with our cities within our county and advocate for our county on a statewide level, which is a skill that you have to have as a hospice nurse. And it's a skill that I would be so honored to bring to the table and serve the residents of Deschutes County with.
All right, thank you very much. Both candidates have introduced themselves and given their opening statement. We'll begin with the questions. And as outlined before by Tyler, what we're going to do is we're gonna start with the incumbent. And Tony will have two minutes to answer this question. Then Amy will have two minutes. Tony will have one minute to rebut. Amy will have one minute to rebut. And then we're gonna flip-flop, and then Amy will start the next question, all right? Here we go. Question for Tony. Number one. Currently, state law prohibits accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, in rural counties. However, discussions are occurring at the state level around policies allowing them. What is your position on rural ADUs? And would you support efforts to allow them as an additional housing option?
So accessory dwelling units. We do have a version of that with the medical hardship unit. So we know how to do that and that, but that's only a temporary authorization here in Deschutes County. Accessory dwelling units, I do support, and they could be that second dwelling on properties that's support with utilities. We do need to watch out for traffic, traffic management, because think of it, the day that the state legislature says, yes, you're authorized to put accessory dwelling units on your rural residential one-acre lots. And we have, you know, 12,000 to 15,000 of them in Deschutes County in some rural neighborhoods. It doubles the population right away. So it isn't as easy as just making that choice of, let's go ahead, a second dwelling on a property. Let's manage that. And I support it, and hopefully we'll get there. As a state of Oregon, statewide land use is not our opportunity to do that until we're given authority. But I support it, and then we'll do some analysis. Traffic is the main thing if we were to double the population on those properties that quick. There's other opportunities though, like a rural co-housing concept where you take one small property and you allow three, or five, or half a dozen or so small cabins for, you know, elderly or individuals. And there's some other opportunities out there that really would make sense. We would need to do that in an organized fashion, once again. Because if everybody decides, well, let's all put six houses on every property, that would really be a shock to the system. So as I say, authorizing that second or multiple dwellings on a property, there are consequences and things designed for. But I am very supportive of expanding the opportunities on existing parcels.
Thank you, Tony. We don't agree on everything, but I do agree with Tony as far as the accessory dwelling units go. In 2014, there was a project in Deschutes County. It was called the Agricultural Lands Program Community Involvement Report. And every single little town within Deschutes County got to have some input. And this was one thing that a lot of people actually agreed upon. There wasn't much that people agreed upon, but this was one thing. And in speaking with a farm bureau, it's really important to them, especially for legacy farmers. Farmers whose families have been here for generations but are unable to house half whole family members and also family on the same property. And I think that we would be doing them a great service by allowing this to occur. We do have to have the proper infrastructure studies in place before we allow this. And I do think that it would be wise for us to limit the number of occupants that can be authorized in an accessory dwelling unit. We need to make sure that we have, like we said, the infrastructure, the traffic studies. Make sure that there's sewage and water available to provide for an increased number of occupants. But I do think that that is a nice first step in helping with our affordable housing issue. I don't want to see density and sprawl in our rural areas, but I do think accessory dwelling units are a good first step.
All right, I don't know if there's going to be any rebuttal if since you both agree. Okay, all right, well then, let's move on to the second question. Maybe we'll begin with you on this one. Deschutes County now makes up a significant portion of the cases seen by the State Land Use Board of Appeals, or UVA. As the county continues to grow and land use decisions are increasingly appealed, how can the county balance its responsibility to protect and manage natural resources with development and the needs of a growing community?
So a lot of the land use compatibility appeals have to do with our EFU, our exclusive farm use areas. And as a lot of you are aware, these farm use areas are not really to have. Some of them are actually really good farm use areas, and some of them are not. And that's really where the conflict is. And a lot of the conflict is actually within cannabis cultivation and people wanting to live on rural lands but not have this crop being grown near them. Could you repeat the last part of the question?
Of course. As the county continues to grow and land use decisions are increasingly appealed, how can the county balance its responsibility to protect and manage natural resources with the development and needs of a growing community?
Okay, right, so there are two parts to that. I think that urban density is something that needs to be explored. Every city's got different needs. Of course, Bend is our population center. And we need to focus on urban density within Bend. We need to try to prevent sprawl within our rural community. Deschutes County is a unique county in the state of Oregon, and I think that's a reason that we have so many appeals. Our land is not as fertile as it is over in the valley. And so it's not really a one-size-fits-all approach that's gonna work for us in Deschutes County. There is some talk about letting us have a little more say over how we manage our zoning. But I think that that could be a slippery slope depending on who is in the position of leadership and what their values are. There are some people in a position of leadership right now that would like to see sprawl, and there are others that would like to prevent sprawl. So I think that loosening the restrictions on allowing us to have decisions over our public land needs to be taken very seriously.
All right, Tony?
Sure, so the number of Luba cases, land use board of appeals from Deschutes County is larger than most counties and other jurisdictions in the state of Oregon. I think of it as a function of our statewide land use system, Senate No. 100, 1973, and then in the process it's gone through. Back in the day, in the 70s, everyone was proud. It was the right place to be in central, in the whole state of Oregon. Statewide land use, let's protect the farmland, let's protect the forest, let's have cities, let's define that urban growth boundaries. Forty, 50 years later, it's really acute. How do we grow past that? There's a conversation that needs to happen, and this would happen in the state legislature. Because there are development pressures now on just the size of the city of Bend, the urban expansion of Redmond. Sisters in Lepine are a really different case. But also, there was another aspect of what happened in the late 70s in Deschutes County specifically, and I'm sure it happened in other counties. When the zoning was put in place, well, this is forest, and this is farm. And then when endowed, let's call it farm, EFU, exclusive farm use, even though it wasn't fertile farm ground. And it didn't really matter for many years, but all of a sudden, it really matters now that there's development pressure again. So is there another case here in Deschutes County that's, non-resource land is the concept? Because resources are farm and forest. So it's really other rural lands outside of the city is kind of the crux of the problem sometimes. We do have very intense land use hearings. We have open record hearings. We have quick books created many times, and they go to Luba. Sometimes, Deschutes County is on the leading edge of that case of first impression. Well, this has never happened in our land use system before, so it needs to be discussed. But also, the appeal process was put in. And a neighbor who says, I like my view, and I like what's in my backyard, and, oh, there's development pressure around me, but I've got an appeal, an opportunity to appeal. So why wouldn't I take it? And that's what happens sometimes too. Even though it's not a direct conflict, it's an appeal process that's utilized. That was the beat.
That was the beat. Amy, one minute. You're good, you're good? You guys are actually running against each other. That was my question. Oh, we're getting there, okay. Maybe it'll be this question. Tony will start with you. The city of Bend is now in the implementation phase of its UGB expansion. With continual growth projected for Bend and other cities in Deschutes County, this is obviously not the last time a central Oregon city will be planning for growth. What steps should the county be taking now to support its cities and plan for further growth?
I get to extend the conversation from just a moment ago. So those lands that are not fertile farmlands on the east side of Bend and their zone EFU enters your parcel. I'm not focused on any specific parcel owner, but it's the concept of what do you do to grow the footprint of a large metropolis area? Bend, you come into big city. When you do an urban growth expansion, you're not allowed to look at those resource lands. And that's all we have, is that EFU parcel. So as I say, 20, 30, 40 years ago, this wasn't the place to be. But now we need to really take some time, look at it in the state of Oregon. It needs to happen at the state legislative level and support being able to have that conversation. The city of Redmond did something very forward-thinking. They did an urban expansion area before they did their urban growth boundary. So they said, where might we go in 50 years? And then they were able to take the smaller chunks out of it. Bend, remember, 10 years ago before the recession, said, we need to UGB, we need to do it now. So they weren't able to take the time to do that 50-year look. They just tried to do the 20-year, and then it went five ways. But as I say, the appeal process and the acute nature of our land use system really slows us down a little bit. Thank you.
All right, Amy?
So yes, Redmond did a great job of identifying their UGB and also identifying urban reserves, which is the 50-year land use plan. Bend, when we identified our urban reserves, we went back and forth with the state. They didn't like how we initially set it up. They sent it back to us, and we had to revise that plan. I think it would be really advantageous for Bend to be a little more proactive in identifying what the urban reserves will look like so that we can anticipate user planning around that. You were asking how the county could support the cities with growth. Every single city within our county is so unique. Lepine has really different needs than Bend does. Clearly, Bend, like I said, is our population center. And the best thing that a county can do is work together with the cities to ensure that the proper infrastructure is in place for the growth that we anticipate. The city of Lepine, their population is about 1,100, 1,600. And they have a different vision for what they want their future to look like. And a lot of future planning, we're gonna have to be cognizant of what transportation is going to look like. If we scatter our communities too much, we're not gonna be able to implement any type of public transportation system. That's also gonna impact affordable housing for all of our cities. Thank you.
So I'm gonna take one moment on that. So one of the things we have here when we talk about the UGB expansion and the sewer and the water are the infrastructure items that are not in a county. So a county isn't gonna be in a situation that really supports specifically our sewer and water. Those are very expensive. And for generations, there's cycles in the federal government where they put these infrastructure grants out, and they pay these big dollars for that. We haven't done that in the United States of America in a while now. So at this point, the local jurisdictions are taking on a lot more of that responsibility. So that's one of the things you learn with experience now, how those dollars flow, and they have flowed in the past. So the true cost of sewer and water systems are always very expensive. And if it isn't a state or a federal grant and the local folks are investing in it, there's a reality there, and it's a very expensive investment.
And when we do talk about resource management, of course, this does tie into the infrastructure. And resource management is something that the county can have control over. And water is going to be a critical resource for us to make sure that we're managing properly. And I'm sure everybody has heard a lot about canal piping and other types of ways that we can make sure that we have enough water for our county in years to come. So that is one area that the county can help the cities with their growth.
All right, thank you. Question number four. Much like much of the state, I should say, Central Oregon's in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. If elected, what solutions to this problem would you propose and work to implement?
Okay, thank you. This is the hot topic, is affordable housing. The median home price in Bend, Oregon is around $445,000. I'm sure you all are abundantly aware of that. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of actually canvassing with John Gilbert, who has been really, really pioneer in our community for affordable housing projects. And he talks a lot about, I asked him what the county can do. And his feedback was, well, the county can do a number of things. But the type of projects that he does, he does projects where he builds, and then he owns these rentals for, he said, usually about 20 years. The county can forgive those areas of their county taxes for a number of years, and then the developers are able to provide affordable housing for a few members of the community. The other, there are a lot of other things that we can do. Lepine has more affordable houses than Bend does. And the one thing that we're missing is a really strong transportation system back and forth between Bend and Lepine. So there are a lot of people who can't afford to live here. They can afford to live in our outlying cities, but they don't have reliable transportation to get them back and forth. So that is a key part of our affordable housing issue. In the past, the county has granted county lands that they are holding to developers in order to develop more affordable housing areas. They've done that in Lepine. There's about, I think, about 18,000 acres available in Redmond. But that could possibly be a consideration for us to work together with developers to provide more affordable housing. And then, as I keep saying, collaboration with the cities is gonna be integral to helping solve this problem in the future.
So affordable housing is a cost-effective home parcel. So I believe in someone being able to buy, invest in a home, have the equity of that home, have the jobs created when that home is built, and the free market system when housing is being created. There's a place for rental housing and subsidized housing. But it's an artificial limit we put on land here in the state of Oregon to get. So it really does trace back to the state legislature. Deschutes County specifically, and I have supported donating those parcels. Habitat for Humanity does a great job of having the community support and volunteers build those homes, get people in those homes, get some equity, understand the whole concept of homeownership. And then also the affordable housing place that my opponent has mentioned here also. But in the big picture, being able to buy into the market, that is something we really advocate for. City of Redmond has a lot of opportunities, market-based housing. It is at $350,000. It's a scary number. In the big picture, you know, a gallon of milk used to be a quarter, then it was a dollar, then it was $2, and it just goes up. So we are adjusting, the whole economy is adjusting at this point in time. City of Bend, it's not a healthy environment for the costs at this point in time. And it's a very hot environment also. City of Lepine does have a lot of land available, very cost-effective land. You still, it costs about $250,000 to put a house on a property without the cost of the land. Once again, system development charges for water, sewer, and roads come into that. So Deschutes County specifically, as I say, we've supported, I have supported very specifically, land donations when appropriate. Sometimes we have properties that are tax foreclosure and look for those opportunities before they go back on the market also. And philosophically though, I do support that free market system.
All right, Amy, wanna take a minute?
One other possible solution is requiring more middle housing to be filled. Currently, at least in Bend especially, we have a lot of single-family homes, very large single-family homes. And we don't have a lot of townhomes, duplexes, and apartments available for people. That might be one solution to the problem. When we talk about centers of urban density with maybe smaller dwellings in walkable communities, I think that people could actually afford to live in those areas, drive their cars less, they wouldn't have to get in their car to maybe go to work, drive their kids to school. We could identify these areas and hopefully build smaller dwellings. And I was also talking to a lobbyist recently. And he was talking a little bit about the possibility of a vertical tax break where when the developer comes in to build, let's just say in one of these centers of urban density, the further that developer builds up, the less their tax rate is. And that's something that other cities have been able to implement effectively to help with their affordable housing issues.
This is a rebuttal also. So the word was used "require." So we gotta watch out for that. I know when somebody has land and somebody has ideas, you know, a development company or a personal property owner, there are wonderful solutions that can come out of that. But it's a shame when it happens at the city council or the commissioner or the state legislative level about requiring a certain density and requiring a required height. So as I say, I'll just point out that one, that issue.
All right, question number five. We'll begin with Tony on this one. What differentiates you from your opponent? What do you think is the most important distinction for voters to know?
Well, today is the first time we are side by side. We were in the primary, I was running a different race, and she was at an event we were at, so I've heard her speak before. So we are basically starting the process today. Tomorrow, we're gonna have an event tomorrow evening. And this is gonna evolve over time. So the citizens here in Deschutes County, remember, this is Bend, Redmond, Sisters, Lepine, and everywhere in between. You know, please get engaged, please follow the process. And as I say, today, we have a lot different answers than probably about two weeks from now, we'll see each other many times. I do have that strong technical background in my previous careers. I've lived in a few different places. My wife grew up here in central Oregon. So we bought and sold a home. We run a small business together, my wife and I, before I ran for office. I never thought of running for office as a career goal, you know, in high school or college or my first careers. So this was really something that was a passion of mine that I stepped into. So we'll hear from my opponent here, and as I say, a couple days from now, we'll know more of the differences of each other.
Thank you. What differentiates us? Well, okay, so I've lived in Deschutes County for about 22 years. I've weathered a lot of storms here. I was here for the economic downturn. I own a property here. And I realized that it was, there were a lot of reasons for the economic downturn here. But our economy was so dependent upon just a few, just a handful of industries. And I feel like economic diversity would be a key solution for us moving forward to hopefully protect us from that type of severe economic downturn in the future. Values-wise, I do differ from my opponent fairly significantly. Fairly progressive in my values. I am pro-choice, female. I have a healthcare background. And this is actually one of the things that led me to run for office. I was sitting in on Board of Commissioner meetings because they were making decisions that affected a business that I owned unrelated to healthcare. And what I realized was that there was a skill set missing from the Board of Commissioners, and that's my healthcare background. Right now, a lot of people who aren't in healthcare don't realize that we have a crisis in our community. We have a mental health and addiction care shortage. We do not have places for people to go who are in crisis. I've seen people get discharged from the hospital in the middle of a crisis onto our streets. And it will be a crisis, and we need to act urgently on it. My healthcare background will inform some of those decisions moving forward to keep our quality of life intact and to keep our community safe.
So very specific on the healthcare challenges. We are, as commissioners, the public health authority, the mental health, behavioral health authority. Behavioral health is mental health plus addiction. So I mean, I do understand what's going on here. We have to watch out for healthcare, and this could go at all levels, local, state, federal, as I say some of these words. But it may not be government's responsibility to take care of everybody's issues. And then healthcare, though, gets so serious about, you know, severe persistent mentally ill, mentally ill with medically diagnosed issues. So we need to make sure we know where those lines are about, are we really just here to help everybody? Or are we defining who needs the very specific medical help? And then as a society and community, and I'm referring to families supporting each other, faith-based communities supporting each other, because generations ago, we didn't have this system. And, you know, you can't spend enough money to help everybody in all the issues of the day.
So this is one area where my healthcare background can really help and inform the situation. If we don't provide these services for our community, we're the ones who are going to be bearing the burden of the cost in the future in terms of public safety, violence in our community, and addiction issues. 60% of the kids that are in the foster care program in the state of Oregon are there because their parents have addiction issues. We pay for that. So if we don't provide these preventive services upfront for a fraction of the cost, we will be leaving a legacy for our kids to have to deal with, the violence and the increased addiction issues.
All right, well, those are all the questions. These are your candidates, folks, for position number one of the Deschutes County Commission. Thank you very much, both of you. Great question. Okay, as Tyler mentioned, we start with the incumbent. Since there's no incumbent in this race, we'll go alphabetical order. Patty liked hearing that. Your candidates for position number three. Patty Adair. Patty is an Oregon native. She received her Bachelor's of Arts in History from the University of Oregon. And after attending Central Washington University Edmonds, she earned her CPA license from Washington State. Patty has worked on various fundraising projects and leadership roles ranging from schools to hospital events, raising more than $2 million. She worked in the accounting field and also managed her family's horse operation, all while raising three boys. Patty lives and sisters on a local family ranch with her husband Bob, and they breed rooey horses. Her opponent, James Cook. James Cook is a small business owner, web developer, and illustrator. He received a Bachelor of Architecture degree from the University of Illinois. James is the chairperson of the Redmond Urban Area Planning Commission and has also served on the Redmond Budget Committee, Parks Committee, and Dry Canyon Master Plan Update Committee. He and his wife live in Redmond, which allows him to share in their lives with their two grandchildren. Please welcome Patty Adair and James Cook. And we'll begin with Patty. Patty, here's question number one. Oh, I'm sorry. Two minutes to introduce yourself. I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay.
Jump ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to thank you for being here. I realize you made a choice to be here, and I think it's extremely important that you are here. I grew up in Hattler, Oregon, and I had my first job on our family ranch at four. Put myself pretty much through college. I did get a history degree. Unfortunately, the economy, when I graduated, was horrid. And immediately, I went back to school and took a couple years, but I got my CPA. I've worked extensively in accounting, and I really did a lot of charity. I believe charity teaches you a lot of things, and that's why I feel that being a county commissioner, learning teamwork, collaborating with the other commissioners, with the state and with the federal government, is going to be critical to the success of our county going forward. I sincerely believe in fiscal responsibility. If you've been here for 12 years, the general fund for property taxes has gone up over 60%. The number of people in that little unit of paying property taxes only went up 9%. So you are paying so much more. I seriously want to make a difference on that. I'm also concerned with, of course, our smoky summers. Currently, in the federal government, they're doing reconciliation on the farm bill, which should double the amount of work they can do on the federal forest here in Deschutes County. That is, we're not going to be able to take care of it in one year, but you know what? We can make a difference. We've got to stop the smoke, and we have to save our water. Next year looks like another drought. You've probably seen that I am a marijuana regulations person. I'm happy that the commissioners have looked at what's happened the last couple of years, and they've done some housekeeping. And I think that's very important for the safety and happiness of our neighbors. I would greatly appreciate your support, and thank you for being here again today.
I've got some comments here, but I've gone past them because I think some important things have just been said. Patty is a former CPA, but she makes some accusations with numbers that just aren't quite accurate. Indeed, our general fund has gone up 60%, while our population has risen a little more than the 19%. The number she used on our website actually began at two different dates, but that's here or there. The fact is that our general fund will rise faster than our population because when new people move in, we build apartments, we build houses, we build new businesses. And that increases the value of the property in Deschutes County, and that means our property is worth more, our tax base is higher. That's a good thing. That's what we try to achieve as commissioners. There's also the issue that Patty likes to say that she's a CPA and she's going after every dime of the budget. But she doesn't seem to understand that the budget isn't just rows and columns in a spreadsheet. Those numbers actually mean something. They mean police officers, they mean public health, they mean road repairs, and they mean economic development. They're real things. There are priorities for the future of Deschutes County and our plan for achieving those priorities. I've actually sat on a budget committee. I've actually helped craft a municipal budget. I know that we have a lot of hard decisions to make as commissioners. I've spent the last six months trying to learn as much as I can about the people in Deschutes County, their needs, their desires, and the challenges we face. When I step into the commissioner position, I'm ready to make those hard decisions so we can build a better Deschutes County together. Thank you.
All right, ready for question number one now? Okay, Patty, begin with you. The county is currently discussing a potential program to reevaluate agricultural lands and define non-resourced lands. Do you support reexamining land designated for farming that may not actually be viable for crops to determine if it could be used for other purposes? And what uses do you feel are appropriate?
Definitely, I feel that we need to do a reevaluation. It's amazing that we have so many EFU lots in our, in our county. Deschutes County seems rather unique. We have unincorporated areas. No one's talked about Tamalo. We've got Alfalfa. We have Sun River, and we have Terrebonne. There's a lot of rural units within our county, and they definitely need more attention. We need to reevaluate what is really going on. I know at my, at our property, I'm always picking rocks. They're, you know, Deschutes County is thought to be famous for rocks. And one other thing I always talk about is parking. We never have enough parking in Deschutes County. I've also been told that, you know, you can't go down, you can't put parking underground because we have so many rocks. So definitely, I feel like we need to reevaluate the zoning, especially around the cities in Bend. Redmond seems to have an adequate area, but definitely Bend, we need to reevaluate what is the zoning. And we need some help from our state legislatures, which I believe are very willing and happy to work with us because they see, right now, I believe Deschutes County is like number three in the state for our real estate cost. It's so high. I mean, houses in Sun River are over $500,000. Houses in Bend are $450,000. Where do we get the wages to support that kind of house? We need to work on it and do it very carefully, but it's definitely, the need is now. We do have several crises going on, and I would like to see something positive happen. Thank you.
I'm going to need you to repeat the question. You're all right? The county is currently discussing a potential program to reevaluate agricultural lands and define non-resourced lands. Do you support reexamining land designated for farming that may not actually be viable for crops to determine if it could be used for other purposes? And what uses do you feel are appropriate?
I absolutely feel that the revaluation that's taking place is a good idea. I think it needs to be done carefully. I think you need to get all the players at the table because what some people consider non-resourced land is sometimes suitable for grazing cattle or other uses. So it needs to be an intense discussion. We need to involve all the parties so that when we do go to the state and ask for changes, we have everyone working together to get those changes. We're making changes that we can go forward with rather than setting ourselves up for litigation for several years in the future. One of the things about this that's been mentioned is it's going to require, if it's going to happen, that the commissioners go to Salem and make the case for the county. One of the big issues that Patty had against her opponent in the primary was she spent too much time in Salem. Patty isn't willing to make the commitment to go to Salem, to go wherever we need to take a stand and speak up for Deschutes County, then we're not going to have a good future. I'm willing to go there. I know that's part of the job, and I'm willing to do it.
Yes, I realize that Deschutes County, with our budget of over $350 million, definitely is a full-time job. I realize that not only working with Salem, I just know it's a 24/7 job. You always have to be paying attention. I'm always talking to people out there, citizens of our county, and actually, citizens of our county that had to move to Crook or Jefferson because it's a lot cheaper to live over there, they still work here. But that's what they had to do, and I want to stop that. I want to bring those people back to our county. I don't want them to have to make a 45-minute commute to work in downtown Bend. I don't think that's fair. I know we'll have to go to Salem. I know we have to work with the federal government. We have a close connection. I just feel like my love, my care for the beauty of this county is critical, and I am willing, whatever the job demands, that I'll follow through with that because I know we can do a better job. Thank you.
So who here doesn't love Deschutes County? Okay, I do. Okay, I'm also aware it's a full-time job, and I was aware it was a full-time job six months ago when you were criticizing Candy Beatty for spending too much time out of town. I still realize it's a full-time job. The fact is, if we're going to work together as Deschutes County and for the best of Deschutes County, we actually have to work together. And that means Democrats and Republicans have to work together. And the fact is, you divided the Democratic Party in Deschutes County. You unseated a very popular incumbent. You supported the loser in the state representative seat for District 53. And you invited people in that just don't reflect the culture of Deschutes County. If you're that divisive within your own party, how are you going to work with the Democrats who, as much as you might dislike it, are in control in Salem? How are you going to work with the Democrats and independents in Deschutes County to move forward?
And on that, we move to the second question. James, you get to start on this one. What is the county's role in supporting cities and expanding their urban growth boundaries? What should Deschutes County be doing to help municipalities efficiently and successfully navigate this process?
Well, I mean, what we can do is help them identify the lands around the cities that are appropriate for expanding into. As we've mentioned, Bend had a heck of a time getting their urban growth boundary. Took them 10 years, so they're going to be facing the same issue again in 10 years. What they need to be working on now, and I know if you're from Bend City Council, you aren't really excited about taking on expansion again at the moment, but they need to be looking at their urban reserve areas so they can grow in a way that makes sense and is logical, and they're not in another 10-year fight come the time we renew their UGB. In Redmond, we didn't quite overreach as much as Bend did, and we were able to expand our urban growth boundary. And admittedly, our situation is a little easier for expansion. But we worked with the county, we identified those areas, and we've got a pretty good, we've got another 10 years of growth left for ours, and we've got an urban expansion area identified. There are places like the Pine where the county owns a lot of land, where I think there's a real opportunity for the county to step in, work closely with the city, and help them turn some of that land into the UGB and into housing in the future. So basically, we can't dictate to the cities what they need to do, but we can work with them to come to a solution. And when they go to the state, we can be there to support them in their application.
Patty?
Yes, I believe that firmly, the county commissioners need to support and work with the leadership of the various cities in our county. And Bend, you know, under tremendous pressure, tremendous growth, and a lot of times, it seems like it takes them a bit longer to actually implement what has, you know, the UGB expansion. You know, it's approved, and yet it still seems like it takes time. One thing that I'm really believing in is that we can make our county offices more efficient. I think that permitting in our county offices can become more serving the public, faster service. And I think that's one thing that will help our county. And something else beyond just the city's expansion with the state is our landfill. Our landfill is supposed to be filled, I'm not wrong, I believe it's within the next 11 years. Talking to Tim, who is the director for the landfill, he said, someone really needs to grab that project now. He has some ideas, and no, it's probably not going to go east on Highway 20 out there. There are other opportunities for it, but you know what? That's one of the biggest battles in the state is designating a new landfill. So that's something I really believe that we, as county commissioners, definitely attain with the other two commissioners. We need to step up and make a difference for our landfill. And then, one other issue that I think we really need to think about today is the communities of Terrebonne, Sun River, and Tamalo. Terrebonne has been incredibly impacted by traffic problems. They're not incorporated. They don't, they don't have the power that the city governments can give to an area. Terrebonne really definitely needs some serious help. 97 is going through there. There's no light. Someone, we need to step up. I know Tamalo is also on ODOT's list, right on, you know, Highway 20. And, you know, they have a lot of growth, a lot of positivity.
I'm going to jump back to the question and talk about the UGB expansion and just point out one comment that didn't seem to make a lot of sense. The UGB expansion is actually a first step. You don't expand the UGB, and boom, it's filled up. A UGB expansion is 20 years worth of growth. In Bend's case, it'll be more like 10 years since it took so long to get the expansion itself. So when that UGB expansion happens, the city has to manage things like getting the infrastructure built out, approving plans for the development, making plant master plans for what type of development is allowed. It's a very complicated process. I sat on the planning commission in Redmond. I've approved these master plans. I've looked at development master plans, subdivisions. We've approved various kinds of housing, cottages, AVUs, variety of things. These are complex issues that are the issues we have to deal with, and you have to stick to the topic and deal with those issues.
I would like to say that my quote was, when the expansion was granted, it had been like, I was told by a high official in Bend that it'd been a whole year and not one shovel of dirt had been moved. So I'm, you know, I'm just thinking, sometimes government seems so slow, and we have such immediate needs. When I feel the people I'm talking to are having to move out of Bend, they grew up here, they can't afford to live there anymore, and yet government is so slow. I know we have to be careful, but then again, I feel like we need to actually implement things as quickly as possible. And in fact, Terrebonne is having several meetings this week about the road issue. You are from that end of the county. I would love for you to be there. One other issue that's with the city, and it's Sun River. Sun River is not incorporated, and Sun River could definitely use more of definite support from the county commissioners.
Actually, you're starting this one, Patty. Third question. Infrastructure is an important function of county operations. If you were elected, what infrastructure projects would you prioritize for the county?
I've been attending a lot of the traffic meetings. I talked to people that have lived here and have tried to do something the past 12 years on Highway 97 between Bend and Redmond. That is a nightmare. I came back from California. I did not want to come back here to sit in traffic. I came back here because I love Bend. We always vacationed here. It's a beautiful place, but it's a really more beautiful place when it's not impacted with such horrific traffic. But what has really happened is that people that live on Highways 97 in that area, they can't hit out their front driveway. And they definitely, if they're on the east side, turning south, it's a serious, serious dilemma where you're taking your life in your hands. I really feel like our traffic, we need to put a lot of pressure on the state. There's the funding there now. I feel like the county really needs to grab more attention, and something needs to be done before three years go by for Terrebonne. The pressure to pull out of Terrebonne in the morning is something I would never want to face every day. You know, people that work in Bend that have to go south and You know, people that work in Bend that have to go south in there on the east side. It's horrific. So if we can improve our traffic, then of course Bend itself, the city, has a subject issue. And I'll, I'm going to leave that to the Bend city councilors. But hopefully, I've heard of a plan where they're actually going to spread the risk. It was a subject system that was not installed 20 years ago. And now these folks, homeowners in Bend, are told that they have to come up with $25,000, which a lot of them are no longer sleeping nights. I think that's horrible. I do believe I've heard an option where everyone would pay $5, spread the risk, but at least bring them into the system if that's what we need to do. And of course, going back to the federal government. We have an opportunity here. Thank you.
Infrastructure projects we need to deal with. Patty correctly mentioned the landfill, which is coming down the road in about 11 years. And the thing you need to do with an infrastructure project is plan ahead because the funding and the equipment and the everything needed to build those big infrastructure projects doesn't come together overnight. You don't identify the problem and say, "Let's get out there tomorrow." You have to have surveys. We know what happens near Lapine. When you don't properly plan for an infrastructure project, you can end up wasting a lot of money. I'm sorry it takes as long as it does. Yes, I would love to make it happen faster. I'll do everything I can to make it happen faster. But there are certain realities we need to deal with. So there's roads, the road in Terrebonne, 97. There is 97 between Bend and Redmond, which is difficult. The state has plans to include U-turn lanes and easy the access onto the highway. That's going to take a little time, but that is in the works. There's the Cooley Road intersection with 97. There's Highway 20 at Tumalo, which a roundabout is on the way. These things have taken time, and kudos to our county leaders for being in there, working on those. The other infrastructure projects we need, we need to make sure that we adequately monitor our subject systems as we grow into the county. Now, this is, the county's not going to build those, but we have to make sure that we're not creating a problem like Patty mentioned where we're putting subject systems out there that as Redmond, Bend, or one of our other areas expands, we're forcing people to connect to those systems 10, 15 years down the road at incredibly high cost. We need to plan ahead, and we're doing that, and hopefully we'll continue to.
Patty? Yeah, one minute.
Oh, wait a minute. Hmm, let's see. What would I like to read back on that? You know, I do believe that we've covered most of the issues as, no, as far as traffic goes from the county. But one thing I personally would love to see is that overpass down in Lapine, there are a lot of recyclable, reusable pieces of earth in it. There's gravel, there's all kinds of things that could be recycled. The project itself was $17 million. I believe they spent about $12 million, and then they're saying they're going to take some more million to tear it down. And I'm saying, please, let's have someone look at that project and let's recycle as much as we can. It's just, it's sitting there. It's recyclable, and you know, with our subject problems, our projects, I do believe that there's a great use there. So I am always trying to look at ways that we can better use our resources that we have here now. Thank you.
One thing about these projects is they all cost money, whether you're recycling an overpass or building a new road or an intersection. We do have some funds now in Oregon designated for transportation. It's a great thing. But I have a problem with Patty looking to the state government and the federal government, especially the federal government, to fund these projects for us when the people she's supported have not been supportive of funding infrastructure projects. They've talked about them a lot, but there's no funding coming forward. They've not been supporting of, supporting our communities and our states with projects like these. They are, as Patty is, focused on every cent of taxes that goes out, and they think any tax is a bad thing. Well, we do have to fund our government. We do have to build these infrastructure projects. If you're not going to fund them, you have to tell me how you're going to build them.
All right, moving on to question four. James, keep the microphone. You go first on this one. What is the biggest challenge Deschutes County faces? And if I might, how would you work to address it?
The biggest challenge we face is growth. There's no doubt about that. Growth affects everything we have to deal with as a county and as cities within our county. The way I most often think about it is in terms of housing because, you know, 14 people a day moved to Bend last year. We have to have places to put those. We need to be proactive about building housing. Work at a crisis level now. And our growth, the last 20 years of growth isn't the same growth we're going to see the next 20 years because growth is like compound influence. The growth that's coming is going to shock us compared to the last 20 years we had. We need to plan for that. Most of that growth is going to have to be accommodated in our cities. But we can help again with expansion around the cities. We can accommodate a small amount of that growth in the county itself. But realistically, growth requires infrastructure, it requires roads, it requires sewers. So we need to put that growth where we have those facilities. We also need growth that puts people next to the jobs so that we don't have to build millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure projects to get people out in the county back into the cities. We need housing that is close to our jobs. We need housing that is close to our shopping. So maybe we can cut down our transportation cost. You know, a car costs about $10,000 a year. And if we could take that car, one car, out of a family that has three cars or maybe a couple that has two, we could put $10,000 back into the economy. Or we could put $10,000 back into the pocket of that couple that they could use there to buy a house. And so a house without the cost going down one bit suddenly becomes a lot more affordable for those people. So again, growth is our issue, and we need to be proactive about facing it.
Actually, I do believe the growth is a serious issue in the county to accommodate it. But the other factor that I really worry about is our forests and the fact that 79% of our county is federal forest land. And last year, the Millie Fire burned 24,000 acres right over in Sisters. 23 deaths from the spotted owl were taken out. The fire was really teeny. We have over 1,000 trees an acre now. The forests have built up over the last 15 years. We had logging on this side of the mountain. I was from Hepner. We had the Kinsu mill there. I'm really hoping that the farm bill comes up with that double amount of money to help us with our federal forests and collaborate and clean up our forests so that when people do move here and we do continue managing the growth, we don't spend our summer dealing with smoke. It's a serious issue, and I feel like it's something that we all have to think about. We have to think about our other natural resource. If people are going to come here, we're going to have tough water. Now, what if we have a horrible winter again? I, you know, it's projected to be a bad winter. I was at the Oregon, this, actually, it was a county water meeting last Thursday morning. They said the state didn't want to announce that we had an extreme drought. For some reason, they did not want to say that. But if you read the Bend Bulletin the next day, it's on the front page. And apparently, all that snow we got a year ago was up, not up where it needed to be. It was down, I think it was at my house. So, you know, I was here for four or five months. We thought we were getting something great for our snowpack, but we weren't. And so I really believe that natural resources are those two things, the forest and the water. We're going to need those for our growth, though it won't work.
I'd like to hear your answers to how we manage the forest. Are we talking cliff cutting? Are we talking, we're going to be, the brush underneath the trees? What's your plan? And I want to hear your plan for water management. Are you in favor of piping canals? Are you in favor of piping canals even when the neighbors would prefer to keep their water feature? Are you willing to say no to people who want to declare our canals a national historic landmark? I'm sitting here, and I'm wondering, what's your answers to all these issues you're bringing up our? Because I haven't heard them. I hear a brief response to a question, and then you raise two or three other issues. And I'd like to hear some concrete plans that you'll enact when you're a commissioner.
Well, believe it or not, in 2014, I saw pictures from Baker County where they ran paddle on one side of the fence line and on the other side of the fence line, the forest was incinerated to the ground. Actually, removing some of the undergrowth is a healthy idea when you have land that actually has grass growing for the wildlife. They can see the danger. We have a, we've had a, you see what's happening in Shasta now. They have a lot of dead trees, and they haven't taken them out. We have to be so careful with our resources. The grazing is one option. You know, logging with a plan, a clear plan, is another option. We have to do something because we have created a tinderbox in western, the western part of America. Our state, Washington State, and California, we are tinderboxes now. And if you look at homes...
All right, well, thank you, Patty.
Thank you, canals.
Okay. Fifth question, we start with Patty. What differentiates you from your opponent? And what do you think is the most important distinction for voters to know?
I do want to say something about canals. The piping has happened in a lot of the rural communities. They have been piping. It does save a lot of water. But the other unintended consequence is then we are going to have this sea beach down to our aqua floor, which is an amazing aqua floor. So there's always two sides to every story. I've been portrayed as a political person, but you know what? Deschutes County is a place where it's my home. It's where I talk to people. I talk to everyone. I feel that as a compassionate person with a lot of positivity and energy, I can make a difference as your next commissioner. I believe that I can dig to the bottom of things. I know about Parker Road. I listened to what the county presented the other day. There's a lot of things that we can make a difference. We can make things safer here, and I believe it's extremely important that we do it so that you, the taxpayers, are in a better position to wake up the next morning. We know you're going to have a smoky day. We know that our roads are going to be clear. We have almost 1,000 miles of county roads. There's a lot of things that I know, as a county commissioner, we can do a better job at. One of my goals and one of the things I really care about is all of you being prepared and having your number with the 911 system. The county has a 911 system. I realize it's not part of today's agenda, but it's really important that's working and your number is in it so that if we have that emergency, you are called. I, I've talked to Democrats, and after they talk to me, they actually, sometimes will say, "Give me your card." I want to be a reasonable county commissioner. I want to work with the other commissioners, and I want to make a safer, safer home for you to work in.
The question was, what differentiates us as candidates? My answer is, you know, we're both relatively newcomers to Central Oregon. I've been there eight years. Patty moved up from California about five years ago, I believe it was. What I would ask you is to look at what we've done since we've been here. I didn't jump into the political party and start trying to take it over and telling people in Deschutes County how they should live and how they should manage their land. I got involved in my city government first because I loved the dry canyon in Redmond, and I wanted to see its reserve. I then went on to the Parks Committee. I went on to the Budget Committee where I actually crafted a budget, or helped craft a budget. I won't take on the coin for it. And I'm now chair of our planning commission. In that capacity, I've worked with people, Democrats, Republicans, independents, and quite frankly, until this election, I didn't know who most of them were as a part of the party affiliation. I've shown that I can work together with people on all sides of the aisle. I think I've shown that I'm dedicated to Deschutes County, and I'm willing to work here to make things better, to ensure we have a good future. And then I'd like to see, just look what's happened in the last six months. I mean, in the last six months, I've been spending my time talking to a lot of people in Deschutes County, ranging from farmers to CEOs, from entrepreneurs to teachers across the political spectrum, learning about the county, learning how the government works, trying to make sure on day one I'm ready to step into that job. Six months ago, Patty said, "I'm a CPA. I'm excited about looking into the budget." Fact is, the budget's a public document. If you've been looking into it, I think it's time we find out what she found out and where she's going to save all those dollars she thinks she can find.
Well, I did grow up in Hepner, and I did graduate from the University of Oregon. I am a doc, unfortunately. Stop all your beavers. I also moved to California, and I lived there for 30 years. But every summer, with the exclusion of two, we always came home to Oregon. We'd come home to Bend. We'd stay here. We love it. We would be here for one fire or another sometimes. Love Bend. I love what this county offers. I'm so happy. I'm out in rural Sisters where we have clean air, we don't have traffic. It's an amazing, beautiful place to live, and it was a choice I made. I have took the county class a year ago, studied the 11 departments. And I also want you to recognize that the county employees were given a raise a year ago. It was a significant raise, and I feel like there's a lot of little details. I spent four days at the budget hearing.
I guess I've got to get my answer. But as far as loving Deschutes County, I look at it like this. And I'll admit, I'm a relatively newcomer. I didn't come here, use it as my playground for 30 years. I came here to be close to my grandchildren. And then I fell in love with the county. But I have a stepdaughter, the mother of my grandchildren in Bend. And, you know, I don't love her one less bit because I didn't come into her life until she was seven years old. And I don't love Deschutes County one bit less because it took me until I was in my 50s to get here and discover it. Perhaps, you know, in some ways, it's more precious to me because it's new to me. And I see the possibilities and the grandeur that I think maybe some people who've been here 20, 30, 40 years or their entire life might have just gotten a little used to. So I want to preserve that. I want to preserve that for my grandchildren. I want to preserve it for you. I want to preserve it for me. Thank you.
All right, those are your position number three candidates. Looking for any of them at this point. Got one of them very far back, of course.
Thank you. So I'm interested in the ADU question that was asked of the other candidates answered from Mr. Adair and Mr. Pope. So are you in favor of rural ADUs or not? Can I speak first?
I've been talking about this for quite a while. When we were looking at property to buy several years ago, we looked at something that had an apartment on it. But they said, "No, you can't legally rent it out." I thought, "Oh, my gosh, that's really bad." And I've been talking about them. I feel that those units will actually, if the state goes through and does what they said they would do early 1919, 2019, that we can put in some with, looking, as Tony clearly pointed out, careful restrictions. We don't need to have a total impact of traffic. But what an opportunity that would give. To me, it's a win-win in many cases for us to have someone on our property. People, workers in this county are living in fifth wheels that I talked to. They need a home. And if you could build something small on your property, on your 10 acres, and allow those people to come and live, it's a win-win to me. And I'm really hoping, I know we have to have careful rules, but I think it's a positive thing for Deschutes County. I think it would definitely bring back those people that had to move through Pineville and bring them back to Deschutes County. Adair Holmes, oh, shall I? When I went to Adair Holmes to thank them for all their advertising, they quickly told me, they tell people to move to Crook and Jefferson County. And I thought, "This is why I'm running." I wanted to... I want it to be affordable for people back in Deschutes because we need those people. We definitely need those people. It's a positive.
Yes, I support the ability to add ADUs in our rural areas. The regulations need to be drafted carefully and I don't consider that it's going to be a solution to our affordable housing or a solution to any of our major housing needs. But I think it is something that would help us. And I think in many cases, it could make our farmers potentially make their lives a little bit easier. Farming can be a marginal issue in Deschutes County. And any way we can help them out, I think we should consider. So yes, I would support that. I would go to Salem to support it and lobby for it as well.
All right. Any other questions? Got any questions for Andy here, Tony?
Yes, I'm rather interested in hearing what you see as some of the biggest challenges in the county. And I'm somewhat surprised that affordable daycare has not come at all. In fact, it's probably one of the most chronic, I think, you do it every day, to support young families. It's housing, but it's also affordable daycare to the point where at times, it's not even worth it to a second individual to only even work. It's so costly. So do you see a role the county in this?
I have been hearing a lot about the lack of affordable childcare, lack of affordable housing, and lack of reliable transportation affecting our service industry to the point that a lot of our businesses are having a difficult time recruiting employees to come to central Oregon. They get here, they can't afford a house and there's no one to watch their kids. I have talked to some people in Willdoma County about whether or not there are county-funded daycare operations. Whether or not that's something that Deschutes County would have in its budget to help support, I don't know. But I do think that it's a need that needs to be addressed. I think that the commissioners need to be paying attention to it because it's gonna negatively impact our economy very soon if it's not something that is addressed.
There's actually a daycare on, I believe it's on 27th Street, where they have an apartment above, but it is a licensed daycare. And perhaps we could see more of those coming in because I know, when I was working and I had little children, it is such a pressure in order to have good care, someone that's responsible and reliable. And you do see it all the time. You can actually get paid $15, $20 an hour to be a babysitter in Deschutes County. I see the postings indeed. And definitely, there is a need there and it would really be beneficial if our county can look at what kind of buildings we are approving and, you know, childcare can go in within that building. It might be, you know, it would be a win-win. The people would actually know their employees can come to work and the employees could see their children during the day. Thank you.
So daycare specifically, we are in a growth phase where you have a diversified economy more than we have in the past. You know, just our community and our society and the people moving here are changing our dynamics pretty quick these days. I know the Bend Chamber of Commerce is really taking the lead on this. It's a good topic for all of us to kind of scratch our heads, think about what the big picture is, what can we do to support it? If Deschutes County proper, you know, if there's a role for us other than just writing a check, because that's the awkward thing, you know, let's figure out what the right solution is. You know, the balance of moms and dads working, but they also, the opportunities for how many kids we really need to keep an eye on during the day. And this is those preschool days also, helping from one to five years old. So I'd support any efforts down those lines and let's work together.
Check out my website, cookfordeschutes.com, and go under the Housing tab. I believe you'll find in some possible ways we can make housing more affordable, the mention of making daycare more affordable. If people have to spend a large sum of money to afford daycare, that's money they can't spend on their housing. You also mentioned to me when we were talking one time that you have people who live in Willpine, go to Bend to drop children off at daycare, come to Sun River to work, and then reverse that in the evening. I mean, obviously, we need to find some solutions. They gotta be creative solutions. We have to think outside the box. Maybe there's some public-private partnerships we can have. Maybe those businesses can go together and provide some onsite daycare. I don't have all the answers to that question, but I think you're right to bring it up. It's an incredibly important question for our economy right now. And if we're gonna make things affordable and livable here and have young families in Deschutes County, we have to find a way to address it. So thanks for your question.
All right, we're gonna give you each two minutes for your closing statements. So just start at the far end. Amy, you want to begin? We'll go down the line here.
Your industry has been integral in supporting the economy of central Oregon and keeping it strong over the years that I've lived here. To ensure that your industry stays successful, we need to make sure that we're protecting our quality of life here. We also need to be realistic about the role that the county can play. The cities and counties is gonna be really critical that the cities and counties are working together as we get through this next phase of growth. And it's, it would be really important to have a long-term resident who understands the unique qualities of the cities to be the first of doing that collaboration on a county level. My opponent has had two terms to implement a reliable public transportation system and that hasn't happened yet. We've had the opportunity to fund a sober center recently in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office. Unfortunately, the funding fell short of keeping it open for 24 hours a day. As a nurse, I can tell you that these mental health crises don't happen in a neat little box and they don't happen between the hours of 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Failing to fund that to be open 24 hours a day is something that I would have advocated against if I had been sitting on the Board of County Commissioners when that came across my desk. We've had the opportunity to implement an effective 911 system that has not been successful. The technology has not been reliable and it hasn't yet been fixed. This is necessary to ensure our public safety and the safety of our officers that need be able to hear their radio when they're going into dangerous situations and responding to calls in the public. And I don't believe that faith-based support is a reasonable solution for our mental health crises that we're facing right now. We need a stronger, a stronger solution to that problem. I believe that it's time for strong, fresh leadership in Deschutes County. I believe that it's time for a long-term resident who understands the value that quality of life brings to all of us. And I would like the opportunity to serve on your Board of Commissioners and be that person to lead us into this next phase of growth while maintaining our quality of life.
All right, Amy, thank you. Let's go, move the microphone down to Tony.
Well, thank you very much for having me. As it was mentioned, this is our first debate or our first candidate forum together. There's gonna be many more. The issues are evolving as we're discussing right now, which is really interesting. I'm gonna enjoy this process in the next few weeks. I'm honored to serve. I have been doing it for two terms, which is eight years. Bend, Redmond, Sisters of Willpine, Sun River, Blackmute Ranch, Eagle Crest, Cronmore, Tumalo, everywhere in between. It's just amazing, all the different parts and pieces of Deschutes County. The land use is a big issue. It keeps us very busy in Deschutes County. The Health Department is serious business and I want to say, please follow this because this is gonna be an interesting topic that we can work back and forth on a little bit. But the Health Department and the services of neighborhood health is a very serious issue in our community. The 911 radio system, I'll say something real quick about that. It's been in the media. It's been a headline. We have a strong, stable system that has some coverage issues in the city of Bend. The officers in Redmond are using it, Blackmute Ranch, Sun River, Sheriff's Office is using it, and the Bend Police are using it. So please learn about the facts about this system. It has been written up a few times and now all the facts are there as this information comes out. I'm comfortable, I made strong leadership decisions when given the information under 911 system. I'm very comfortable making the tough decisions as a commissioner. There's many topics that come across our desk. I am open, honest, and approachable. I enjoy being commissioner for you, the citizens here in Deschutes County. I appreciate your vote. I have been doing this for a while and I do want to offer that hard work and experience for four more years. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tony. James, we'll begin with you. Two minutes.
I didn't expect to be addressing the 911 issue today, but since it's come up, we don't have a well-functioning 911 system. If we did, our fire departments would be coming on board and they've chosen to wait until they're sure of the system. We have, we have a system that has generated problems from the day it went live and it's taken us a year to get to the point where we're actually addressing those problems. That's too long. We're gonna hear a lot about that issue in the future. It will ultimately resolve. We have an immediate issue with the system we have in place now. We have to resolve those issues and how many millions of dollars and who's gonna pay for it. But then we have a longer-term issue as to whether that system is actually capable of getting us through the next 10 or 20 years. And finally, we have an issue of how we got to this place in the first place. And as we go and look at those issues, I think the Bulletin actually had some very good editorials on the subject, but we're gonna find out that there's plenty of blame to go around. Everyone involved in this process at some point or the other seems to have let something slip by. But the County Board of Commissioners is the ultimate governing authority for the 911 district. And that being the case, the buck has to stop with the county commissioners. And I'm telling you here, when I'm one of your county commissioners, the buck will stop with us. Thank you.
All right, Patty.
Good afternoon. I bet you're all excited that we're almost done. It's been a great afternoon. It's been a privilege to speak to all of you. I do live in the county, actually, out in the country, out on the way to Lower Bridge. I'm seeing a lot of change going on. I see a lot of traffic going on. And I know that with a lot of thought and smiles and persistence, that we can actually improve and make things a little easier for those people that live here. I'm so grateful that you asked the question about ADUs because that's something I believe in. I believe in habitat for humanity. I believe in, we have a fabulous program. We need to do more in the county to make it affordable and we need to really watch how much money we're spending. When a department comes in and says they need four new cars, we need to make sure that they really do need four new cars. Now, I know there's programs that can tell you this, but I honestly believe that we need that personal touch of someone who has watched money being spent in charities and at the county jobs. And we need to be really careful with our county because Deschutes has had a cyclical, you know, the 90s and then we went up and then we go down. And, you know, our property values are getting high again. And I think we really need to be careful. We need to be careful about how much we're charging people for the SDCs and our county fees. I really hope that our planning department can become more efficient, more helpful to all of you and actually bring in the costs. I know they reduced some of them this year and I'm hoping that we can continue to do that next year. Thank you so very much. I would greatly appreciate your support. I would love to work with you and I would love to hear from you. Please call me if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, those are the county commissioners.